Commissioner Hardy?
Yes.
And Chair Low?
Yes. Congratulations. All right, are there any nominations for Vice Chair? Any nominations for Vice Chair? Go ahead.
I would like to nominate Commissioner Goodbody for Vice Chair.
Are there any other nominations? Can we have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Franco Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodbody?
Yes, and I accept.
Commissioner Hauman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hardy?
Yes.
And Chair Low?
Yes, and I was so enthusiastic, I forgot to ask you if you were going to accept, so yes. Congratulations. I accept. Are there any nominations for Secretary?
Can I ask a question just about whether people must be present?
No.
Tonight to be nominated?
Nope. You don't have to be present to be nominated. However, if somebody isn't here and you nominate them, then we would table it until they are here, so they can accept. Go ahead. Did you have something else to say?
I was going to nominate Commissioner Myers.
Okay. All right, any other nominations? All right, so we're going to table that until Commissioner Myers is here, so that we can see if he accepts that. And at this time, we're going to move to the item number two, which is General Plan Annual Progress Report.
Okay, I'm going to go for the, oh, sorry.
Oh, I was just going to say, and does the city have a presentation?
Yes, we do, actually. Thank you very much. Good evening. I'm so happy to be here with you tonight to present the 2024 General Plan Annual Progress Report. Planning staff prepares and provides this report annually to the Planning Commission and the City Council before submitting it to the State Office of Planning and Research and the Department of Housing and Community Development in accordance with state law. While planning did take the lead on drafting the staff report, we did receive input and support from nearly every city department and division. These include but not are not limited to Public Works, Transportation, Engineering, Utilities, Fire, Police, Library Services, Housing, Code Enforcement, Maintenance, Community Services, and the City Managers Department. I'm sure I've forgotten somebody in there, but it truly is a whole city effort, this update. So the Hayward bit of background on this one. The Hayward 2040 General Plan and Related Implementation Plan was adopted in 2014. The general plan is organized into different elements. These include land use, mobility, economic development, community safety, natural resources, hazards, education and lifelong learning, health and quality of life, public facilities and services, environmental justice and housing. All of these elements contain goals, policies, programs, and actions that are intended to guide development and programming and activities throughout Hayward through the year 2040. In 2023, the city adopted an update to the housing element. And then in 2024, we adopted updates to the Climate Action Plan and amendments to the hazards element and a new environmental justice element. At that time, the General Plan Implementation Plan was also amended to incorporate new programs and actions within the mobility element, natural resources, and public facilities and services elements. These incorporated cap-related measures intended to help the city achieve green, adopted greenhouse gas emissions reductions targets. So this table provides a snapshot of programs and program status by element. In total, there are 433 programs. And you can see that the different elements have different amounts of programs, and they're ranging from about three in one of them to 120 in another. About 10% of the programs are complete, in that there's no additional work to be done on them. 50% of the programs are what we consider partially complete. That means they may have started, they may have numerous steps to them, they may come to a conclusion or they may not, because they might require ongoing monitoring or updating throughout the life of the general plan. So therefore, a few of these may not be considered complete. 24% of the programs are ongoing, in that they're going to require ongoing annual or some other measure of monitoring, outreach, reporting that will come to the City Council or to regional agencies or even the state. Finally, 35% of the programs have not been started for various reasons, such as staff capacity, funding, or shifting priorities. It's important to note that 300 of, over 300 of these programs were adopted as a result of the housing element and the cap-related updates in 2023 and 2024. So many of them are quite new. And that's where you might see that 35% number, is that they were just adopted in the last two years, and we just haven't gotten to them yet. And then finally, 35% of these programs in the general plan align with strategic roadmap priorities and projects. The strategic roadmap is adopted by the City Council, and it's updated annually. It's basically a work plan for city staff in order to sort of have concrete goals and projects that will be achieved in about a one-to-three-year timeframe and have measure, like measurable metrics and outcomes that get reported to the City Council annually. To the greatest extent possible, staff does try to align strategic priority projects and work with general plan programs. And there is overlap in the areas listed on the slide, specifically confront climate justice, invest in infrastructure, preserve, produce, and protect housing, grow the economy, enhance community safety, and cultivate vibrant neighborhoods. So staff will bring this annual progress report to the City Council in March, before it's submitted to the state on April 1st. And again, this happens every year. In addition, the strategic roadmap update will also be provided to the council in March. In the next year, staff will continue to monitor progress on the general plan and return to the commission next February with a 2025 update. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions, but please be aware that I may not be able to provide much more information than what's provided in all of the attachments that were provided to as part of the staff report. And that concludes this presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. So much great work going on in the city. Do, um, do any of my fellow commissioners have questions? Go ahead.
So thank you for your presentation, and also thank you for answering a couple of questions that I had prior to the meeting. It was helpful to see the way that the strategic roadmap alignment goes with just the general plan. So that's helpful for me to have more understanding of that. My only question is, when it comes to the presentation that's going to happen with City Council in March, is it, is it going to be this coming month?
For the General Plan Annual Report?
No, no, the stra-, I'm sorry, the, um...
The strategic roadmap update? Yes, my understanding, it is headed, the project is headed by the City Managers Office, and Dr. Alvarez can speak to that.
Thank you so much. Yes, we have a, a public meeting, a special meeting of the City Council, on Saturday, March the 8th. And we are hoping to approach the, the report in a two-part series. So that'll be the first part, and you're all welcome to join us.
Thank you. That was my question, if there was going to be a presentation for us too. So thank you for the invitation.
Any other questions? Okay, we're going to move to public comment on this item. And we do have a public comment from Vasco Yorgov. And please forgive me if I mispronounce your name.
It is not an easy name to pronounce, so all good. Hi, I'm Vasco Yorgov, citizen of Hayward, and I actually work as an affordable housing developer as well for Eden Housing. Yeah, just want to take a moment to shout out city staff. You know, this report and the general plan is preparing it as a thinkless task oftentimes, but it takes an immense amount of work. So I just really want to say, acknowledge staff for the work they've put in. Really, you know, when it works well, it's not noticed. But the city of Hayward is one of the best cities to work in, to build housing, to live in. I lived down the street. And also, staff are always incredibly responsive. I mean, reached out about stuff like Home Key asking what steps the city's taking. I've gotten responses back within like a day. I've attended workshops facilitated by staff. So I do just want to say, y'all do an amazing job, and yeah, thank you. That's it.
Thank you so much, Mr. Yorgov. That was very, very nice, and I agree. Staff does an excellent job. Thank you so much. And are there any other commissioner comments? Okay, then I'm going to close this item and move on to the next. Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. All right, so item number three is a work session on proposed tax amendments to the Hayward Municipal Code for the Adoption of an Updated Tree Preservation Ordinance. Do we have a staff presentation on this?
Good evening, Commissioner Peter Jensen, landscape architect for the city of Hayward. Very excited to be here tonight to continue this process of the update to the tree preservation ordinance. Tonight will be the second presentation that we've given to the commission to get your input on the revisions made to the larger proposed policy updates to the ordinance that we reviewed in September. The city's tree preservation ordinance is contained within the Hayward Municipal Code and establishes the guidelines for preservation of existing trees in the city of Hayward and the process for removing, pruning, and mitigating of the trees. The first tree preservation ordinance in Hayward was adopted in the 1950s, so we've had it for quite a long time, with updates occurring in 1971 and 2002. So it has been a while since we've updated the ordinance. The city and the state have adopted several goals and policies that focus on sustainability, climate change, and the environment since the ordinance was last updated. Several Hayward guiding plan documents have also been either updated or adopted since the last update, including the Climate Action Plan, the update to the City General Plan, as well as the recently adopted city roadmap. The update to the tree preservation ordinance focused on three elements, including the update to the tree preservation ordinance itself, the development of landscape guidelines for the Hayward Airport, and to perform a citywide tree canopy analysis, which we shared at our last meeting with you. Revisions to the ordinance include the alignment to, with new and best practices for tree preservation, expanding definitions, simplifying policies and procedures, and providing more flexibility to applicants for when they want to remove or prune protected trees. I would also say that as part of our public outreach, over 300 postcards and emails were sent out regarding this meeting, inviting folks from the community and stakeholders to attend, as well as to read the draft update to the ordinance and the revisions that are made to that. In the previous work session with the commission, the commission was requested to provide input on larger policy updates. Those included the expanding of protection, protection to native trees on private property, defining and creating protection for heritage trees, adding mitigation requirements for lost tree canopy, the addition of an in-lu fee option to allow for off-site mitigation, updates to the master fee schedule for tree removal permits, and reducing the duration of tree removal permits. The commission was supportive of the majority of the recommendations made prior, including the addition of the heritage trees, the addition of an in-lu fee, and updates to the tree removal permit fee. And the commission requested a more information and a solidifying the protection of native trees on private property and of the reducing of the duration of the tree removal permit period. For input provided by the commission and City Council, the following updates are proposed for these main policy revisions, which are as follows. The first one we're going to discuss is the preservation of native trees on private property. This would expand the current protection of native trees in front yards to include rear yards of residential properties. This expansion of the protection of native trees to the rear yard would impact a small amount of property owners, mostly along the interface between the urban and native areas. But due to the significant size of the canopy of these trees, it is recommended to provide protection for them all. The goal of protecting native trees in rear yards would be to ensure that when a mature native tree is removed, that it is mitigated as measures, as a measure and means of restoring the canopy that was lost, which currently is not occurring. The commission expressed concern about the financial impact adding protected trees or native trees in the rear yards of private property. To address this issue, staff is recommending a replacement ratio of two to one, basically, using a 24-inch box tree, which is a fairly standard-sized tree, when removing a native tree. This significantly, significantly lowers the cost of tree replacement to the property owner. Instead of using the appraised value for the tree as the mitigation, using the two-to-one ratio, again, lessens the impact of cost to the property owner to mitigate those trees. Other methods recommended for reducing the cost of protecting native trees in rear yards also include creating a sliding scale for permit fees based upon the number of trees to be removed. Currently, right now, we just have a set standard one cost for a tree removal permit. The addition of exemptions to the permit, which would allow a, community members to remove trees that are dead or dying or hazardous without having to pay a, a permit fee for that. Mitigation, though, would still be required, so we'd still replace the tree that was lost at a two-to-one ratio. And the reduction of the tree pruning permit. Right now, we have two permits, basically, one for removal of trees and one for pruning of trees. And we feel that we can bring down the cost of both of those, and we can bring down the cost of the pruning permit as well. Pruning permit is usually required to ensure that when a tree is pruned, that it's done by a professional that is maintaining the health and safety of the tree. For the addition of heritage trees, the following updates are recommended. Addition of heritage tree to the ordinance. Currently, heritage trees are not protected by our current ordinance. They are not included in the ordinance at all. To designate a heritage tree, staff is proposing that it meets two criteria, that being either native of a mature-sized tree, native trees that provide habitat, trees that are horticulturally, historically, or culturally significant. So a, to determine if a tree is a heritage tree, it must meet two of those criteria. Currently, most cities don't actually have a criteria. They basically just state a size of a specific tree. But we felt that to better define what it was and to communicate that to the community, that by setting up the criteria would a better emphasize of what the heritage tree is. The process for removing heritage tree would require utilizing and establishing, an established process, the site review process. That process would allow for a public notification for a tree being removed. And it would limit the amount of a, public hearings. It would only have a hearing if it was challenged by the applicant, either coming to the commission or to the council for their final determination on the removal of the heritage tree. The addition of factors to consider for removing trees also added to the ordinance itself. These provide clear guidance of what is a, or what are the findings that need to be required for the removal of a tree that are not present in the ordinance currently. For the mitigation of trees for development projects, and I, I want to stress that this is for development projects, so it's not just for property owners, commercial or residential property owners. These are for projects that are going through the process of development. We discussed last time adding a mitigation of canopy replacement. Per further discussion with staff and consultant, it was felt that maintaining our current mitigation of using the appraised value of the tree would be best, just for simplicity's sake. It's also a mitigation that we've been using for decades in Hayward, and it's working a very well at this time. It also has a clear process of defining how much a tree is worth, which then also leads to a, our recommendation of having an in-lu fee as part of the recommendation, basically based upon that value. To move into the in-lu fee, for the mitigation, where basically a, staff is recommending that a, we use or introduce an in-lu fee to the ordinance that provides flexibility to applicants of how to mitigate those trees. So this would allow then applicants to pay an in-lu fee for the amount of the appraised value that is not being used to replace trees on the site. That value would be given to the city, and then the city would be able to use those funds to plant new street trees or park trees in the city, as well as to maintain trees. Staff is recommending that the amount of the in-lu fee would be based at 125% of the remaining value not used or on-site. That extra percentage, the extra 25%, would be used to cover the cost of purchasing, planting, and maintaining the tree and the, the management that goes with all that. So that there, it's an extra part of it. It's also used to incentivize those that are removing trees to try to replace the trees on-site and not actually use the in-lu fee. But currently, we do have an, an in-lu fee that we use that is for specific park projects. This would allow the use of the in-lu fee funds to be used to plant trees throughout the entire city and mostly focus on areas that are underserved or have limited canopy. The next two things we're going to discuss is the tree removal penalty. Right now, it's not clearly stated in the ordinance what the actual penalty for removing of a tree is. Staff is recommending that we basically use the established penalty that is used by building when a, guidelines aren't followed, to be double the amount of the permit fee. Currently, the permit fee for tree removal is $587, so it would be double that amount. It would not, that amount would not replace, though, the fact that the tree would still have to be mitigated, so there would be extra costs associated with actually planting of new trees. It's just defines the amount of the penalty that would be set for doing so without having a permit. And then the final thing, the staff is recommending is the reduction of the duration of a tree removal permit. Currently, right now, the duration is a period of one year. Staff is recommending to reduce that to a period of three months and with the option of extending that for a period of three months after that period. This is being recommended to encourage those that have pulled the permit to remove the tree. Most of the time, when a tree removal permit is pulled, it's because the tree is dead or dying or is a hazard. And of course, we'd like to see the tree removed in a more expedient fashion than what has been done. It's also recommended to assist staff. While managing the removal permit for one year is, is a, a long period of time for staff to be doing for the amount of removal permits that we process. So it would make that a process easier and, and more, easier to manage. For the next steps of the ordinance, City Council will have a work session on March 18th. From the comments received tonight and from that meeting, finalized draft ordinance will be prepared and a, provided for the community to review and to comment on. Those comments from the, the community, the council, and the commission will be updated, the, the draft ordinance. And at some point here in the late spring, early summer of 2025, we'll bring back the final draft of the ordinance for the commission to make a recommendation for adoption to council. And with that, I'll open it up to questions from the commission.
Thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you.
That was very helpful. Do any commissioners have any questions? Go ahead, Commissioner Franco Clausen.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I remember that session. I'm so glad you came back and gave us an update. If we could go back to slide number five? I just wanted to ask just an additional question.
Sure.
Yeah. So, um, when we talk about the in-lu fee, the 100 and, wait, maybe it's slide four. Can you go back one more?
Uh, I think we're on the right slide.
Is this the right one?
Yeah.
No, this, but there was one that said something about... Oh, it is, it's live, okay. When we talk about the in-lu fee and we charge them, we're still, even though if they can't mitigate the tree, and this is just, I'm just checking for understanding, is that we can charge them this fee, but will we still plant a tree and then maintain that tree for them even if they don't do it? Is that what you're saying?
Currently now, for a development project,
Yeah.
when it comes through the site review process, through planning and
Right.
review the plans, the trees on-site that are being removed, an ARBRIS report is generated, and it basically gives us the value of each one of the trees that's being removed. So just for example, if it's $3,500, let's say four trees are being taken out, and they're valued, and their total is $3,500. It's the applicant that has to basically use that amount to replace trees on-site. So if they only replaced $2,000 worth of tree, they planted eight 24-inch boxes, then there would be $1,500 left over. And then that, basically $1,500, you would apply the 125%, and then that amount would basically come to the city for planting of trees in the city. And again, the 25% would be there to kind of cover the management and the purchasing and the planting of, of those trees.
Not on the development, but somewhere else.
But somewhere else, yes. And currently, right now, we, we have an unofficial, I guess, in-lu fee that we have been taking for a, a specific park in Hayward, that the money is basically going to that specific location. This would then allow basically trees to be planted throughout Hayward, mostly based upon the tree canopy analysis that we did. And areas that are underserved would be the, the main focus of using those funds and planting. There's also been discussion of using the funds to assist with maintenance of trees. So for the native trees, if we decide to protect native trees in property owners' backyards, there could be the option of using some of those funds as, for maintenance of the trees and, and reducing, again, the financial impact of having those trees as being protected, so.
Thank you. I do have just a couple of follow-ups, if that's okay? Thank you. Trees are my thing. And I ask all these questions because at this current moment in time with homeowners insurance, I think about all my neighbors, not necessarily, I did hear that you were saying more closer to the hills and areas where they do have a lot more native trees. But for example, I love to use Sleepy Hollow as the example. Our neighbor's tree caught fire because all the trees right now are currently in the PG&E wires. Our PG&E wires on Sleepy Hollow are pretty dangerous. I'm waiting for something terrible to, to actually happen because all the trees are intertwined, because there's no maintenance. There's several trees, and I only know this because I, I walk every night, and I walk in the morning, is some of the sidewalks are coming up. A woman broke her ankle right in front of me. Is there anything around the in-lu fees that we could that we could have in a fund to address that? Because I know why we focus on other areas that have a lot more, you know, native trees that are closer to the hills and other areas where we see more of them. But in the neighborhoods, there are so many unkept trees. There is no maintenance, even the impact they have on our streets and sidewalk, which is a whole other layer. Me, I want all the trees. I want to make sure that there's trees everywhere. But I also think there's a responsibility, as we think about the current times and what people may be facing, as people are losing their homes or losing their jobs, a lot of federal funding, how can we reduce that harm to anyone who might have to remove a tree that is not dying but has caused damage to the infrastructure of our city streets or are tangled up inside the PG&E or the internet Comcast, you know, AT&amp;T wires? I will send you pictures. Because I think that's something we should also do, and I know we do this... I don't know how you take a picture of the landscape of all the trees for the whole canopy, but some in-person surveys to kind of see other areas where we can mitigate possibly a natural disaster that could be prevented. If there was a fund that did also a survey that went around the city specifically in those lower-income communities and working class that actually don't know anything about the trees, don't even know there's how many seats in here. They don't come here to talk about those problems, no matter how many times I tell them. Is there, as you present this report, which I'd be happy to support at a later time, just a thought process around creating a fund that can actually help Hayward folks right now in a time of need, especially around the trees, to make those options a lot more obtainable, you know, accessible? But also, if we can break it to people in a way, in layman's terms, because I know that we're trying to avoid cutting them, but we also have to think about the maintenance in areas where people are not taking care of them.
Right.
That was one of the really big things. I'll let you answer that, and then I'll ask my last one.
Well, there's multiple layers of, I guess, answering that question.
Oh, I had to make it difficult.
The city does have, of course, budget to repair sidewalks and to maintain and trim trees. That is continuously going on. Of course, there's a lot of sidewalk repair and tree trimming to be done, so it takes a while to get around to do them all. So that process is taking place. I do know that the tree maintenance staff is actually going to embark on a tree study of Hayward, not just the canopy, but actually counting all the trees in the city. And it will capture some of that information in there as well, so they can better program and schedule themselves for, of course, future maintenance of the trees and sidewalks. For the power line aspect of it, the local utility provider is also does tree maintenance as well, where they are cutting the trees basically back down into size to stay out of the high-voltage lines. So that is another element that's happening. Of course, we can discuss further with the maintenance staff about using INLOFEE funds to help that process go along. I would say, though, that the amount of funding collected from the INLOFEE, which is usually, has been historically over the past few years, about $100,000 a year, is not overly significant in really impacting the budget that's already set aside for doing that work. But it is something that we can definitely consider. I think we had mostly discussed using the INLOFEE to maintain native trees if they were protected in people's backyards, so there would be a way for them to either apply for reimbursement or have the city come out and do pruning for them of those trees to lessen the impact, the financial impact of having them. But that's definitely something that we can review more. And we can also relay to the tree maintenance and sidewalk maintenance, you know, about any issues that they have. So, and again, it is kind of about community speaking up about those things. Definitely, you know, in a specific neighborhood, if there was issues with the sidewalk or issues with the trees, if they reached out to the maintenance department, they would address those. So, but that is something that we can consider for using the INLOFEE. I just don't know if it's the amount that we actually collect on that is going to have a big impact on that type of maintenance just because the budget is so large and it's being done all the time, so.
You just led me into my final. Pulling that all together is, when we come and we bring this again and we finalize, I think there should be a component where that conversation between those two departments happens. Because I do think we should preserve the tree, but we also should think of all the different layers of having trees in Hayward, not just the canopy, but also the maintenance and how it impacts people from Hayward who may not have the financial ability, who may be just making it by.
Right.
Or they're elderly and they're living off of, you know, federal money that may not be there in the next six months.
Right.
I just think it should be taken under consideration that we think of the economic impact to people during this current time when we make a large, general decision. Because not every community here is the same, and their financial abilities are not the same. But I'm all for it. I just think that we should consider that as well. Thank you.
If I could just add, when Peter said...
Please add, Jeremy.
That was something that we actually talked about, and it is something that we kind of envisioned. You know, part of the tree canopy survey that we did showed there were a lot of neighborhoods that were currently underserved with canopy. There were also neighborhoods that probably had good canopy, but they weren't maintaining their trees. And so one of the things that we had talked about, and it will ultimately be up to the City Council on how they would like to program these monies. But in addition to planting new trees in areas that are currently underserved, we talked about possibly, and as an option for council to consider, setting aside a small pot of money that could go for certain homeowners, maybe if they're in low-income census tracts or themselves, and they need some additional resources to be able to just maintain their trees. But I think the original question that you asked was about the sidewalk. And we do have exemptions that we are proposing as part of the ordinance, so that if it's causing damage, whether it's the trees dying or dead, or it's hazardous because it may be up in the hills and maybe there's a fire risk. And a Cal Fire just released their latest draft maps this week, and so I think everyone's really thinking about that. I can tell you, if you're a homeowner that is being potentially cut off from your insurance agent, obviously being very thoughtful about where vegetation would be near your house. And so all of that absolutely comes into play. But that's also part of the reason why this INLOFEE is important. Because not every site and not every development can accommodate these grandiose trees. There may be a better way to program it in areas that could accommodate that. And so, and part of that could be extending like a grant program or something to homeowners to help maintain those trees so they can continue to thrive. So I just wanted to expand on that a little bit.
Thank you both.
And I would say too that, you know, when street trees especially were planted in the '50s, in the '60s, in the '70s even, there wasn't a lot of science put behind it. It was mostly about what trees were available and what trees that those that were planting liked to plant, without really a lot of consideration to the site, which over, of course, as time has gone by, we know a lot more about and what trees to plant and what spaces they should be to try to limit some of that. Of course, it's not always, once a tree is matured, usually starts to have some impact on the sidewalk. But as time goes on, the city is focused on, you know, planting correct trees in locations to start to limit the amount of impact on the infrastructure, for sure.
If I may, this is Theo Spores, the landscape architect for the city. I'm joining you online. You can hear me, obviously.
Did you have a comment?
Yes, I wanted to, I wanted to make sure I was connecting. I just wanted to address the question about trees that are overgrown, sidewalks, et cetera. We do have a pretty good access portal for the public through Access Hayward to file a complaint, file a report of a situation where trees are overgrown. And we send those directly to those departments when those come in. And they're pretty good about responding to those situations and rectifying them, you know, along with their schedule, of course, depending on what's happening. But that is something that's in place and can be utilized. Take photos, put the address down, name, contact information, and then that is forwarded to the departments that can address the problem.
Thank you.
Yes, it's very good information, and it's good to remind people that Access Hayward is a resource for all of us. Are there any other commissioner questions? Questions? I have a question. Oh, go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, Chair Lo, or Commissioner Lo. So I have a question on slide four is really just for my understanding. So can you speak a little bit more about the two-to-one ratio? I don't remember having a lot of discussion about that at the last meeting. So does this mean that... And I know you just explained it, so forgive me if I'm just asking you to repeat yourself, but I don't think I caught it. So for each tree that is taken out, two have to come in? If it's a native tree?
Yes.
Okay, and so that's regardless of space available? Or it's two no matter what?
No, the INLOFEE can still be applied to that process as well. So if there's only then one option of planting one of the trees just because of the size or the space that's available, then the other tree, you can pay the INLOFEE to basically add to the fund so that tree can be planted in another location. So it is flexible in that regard. How we had it previously when we presented it to you, that wasn't an option. The two-to-one is new, and it's basically in response to the concern by the commission of the cost of the replacing of the tree if they were protected, which was based upon the appraised value. And for a large native tree, can be quite significant. Mostly, what we're trying to do is just ensure that a tree is mitigated. Right now, most of the large native trees that are moved from backyards are not mitigated at all. There is no new tree that's planted. So there's no future canopy that's going to be created. So we want to provide the opportunity to mitigate that tree and to reestablish basically the canopy that's been lost. We did notice that in the tree canopy survey that was done that the native trees make up a large part of our urban forest. And it's actually not the urban part. It's mostly up in the foothills. But they also then, you know, in those properties that back up basically to them that have those trees there. So because of the impact they have and because of the large amount of the canopy that they're creating, we felt that there was the opportunity to add and protect those native trees in backyards because of the environmental impact and sustainability impact that they're having on the city itself. So, but again, instead of just applying the current method of the appraised value, which could be tens of thousands of dollars for some large-scale trees, the replacement of just two 24-inch box trees is much more equitable and is more possible for people to actually do, so.
Thank you for that clarification. So how does or would the city monitor tree removal and planting in private property? What if someone just had the resources to just hire someone to come do it? How does the city know whether they've done that? And how do they know if they've replaced it?
Well, it's the same thing that we have now. Native trees in front yards are protected. The community is required, if they want to prune or remove a protected tree, that they apply for a permit. That permit can be approved or denied depending upon actually the state of the tree. So if it's approved, then the tree is allowed to be removed and to be mitigated, so it would still be the same process. Of course, there are trees in Hayward that are removed without a permit that we never hear about, and that's kind of the, you know, the reality of what's happening there. I would say that usually we hear, especially if it's a large-scale tree from neighbors, about it being taken out. And that's basically how we know, and then becomes more of a code enforcement issue at that point. Mostly for our sake, we just want to see the trees mitigated. We want to see new trees planted and just not removed at all. But there's definitely trees that fall through the cracks, of course, that we don't know and are never reported, and no one ever really reaches out to actually pull the permit that's required. I would say if the, if native trees in rear yards are included in the ordinance, that along with this, there would be an educational campaign as part of it that would be more outreach to the community, basically stating, you know, what kind of the rules were and what was required as far as pulling a permit and those things, so we can make more people aware of what the proper procedures are for maintaining and for removing those trees.
Thank you. So I guess I'll save some of what I'm thinking for comments around this, but I'm just concerned, and maybe it's not a real concern that actually is happening, but just whether it creates any kind of an equity issue around people who have resources and people who don't. And so I definitely would hope that we don't put anything in place that is more harmful to people of lower income, actually, who aren't able to just hire people and do things versus those who are. And so a question is, when you said it becomes a code enforcement issue, is there a fee associated with that if you were to not do this through the proper channels? And is that fee close to the INLOFEE? Like what's, and sorry, I didn't ask that ahead of time, but I wasn't thinking about it.
No, and that's actually something we went over in slide six was the tree removal penalty. Right now, it's not really clearly defined in the ordinance what the penalty is if you do remove a tree that's protected without a permit. We want to clearly define what that is. And currently, right now, we have a process in building that is basically if you do something and you don't have a permit for it, then it's double the amount of the permit fee. So the penalty would be the double the amount of the tree removal permit, which currently, right now, is $587. So it would be double that basic amount. The other thing that then goes along with that, though, of course, is you would still have to mitigate the tree. So you would have the penalty, plus then you would have to plant your two 24-inch box trees to replace that tree, so.
I also just wanted to clarify that one of the things that we're proposing is a sliding scale. So while the current permit fee is $587, if someone is illegally removed only one tree and that normal cost to remove one tree would have been less than that because they're applying the sliding scale, it would be double whatever that sliding scale amount would be. So it's not an automatic doubling of this rate that you see right here. And that's based on current practice that we have in the master fee schedule.
Thank you. So my other questions are just around, potentially just, I really like what you just mentioned around community outreach because I was thinking about how much community outreach might be needed for both current homeowners and then also future homeowners as people purchase housing. So could you speak a little bit more to just any thoughts you have about how this all would be communicated in the community to those different groups?
I mean, I think we'd take a multiple-pronged approach, of course, releasing information on the larger stack articles that we put out. We could include information in people's utility bills, of course. We could send out mailers to the community, social media posts. I think that we would try to use as many methods of getting the information out as we could and continuously do that, not just one time after the adoption, of course, the ordinance, but, you know, it could be a yearly thing or, you know, how it was set up to continuously get the word out about not just the process of removing and pruning trees, but also the importance of having trees too. You know, we see that as very important as well because, you know, a lot of the street trees that we have, it's very important that the actual resident... trees that we have, it's very important that the actual resident is caring and watering it and all those things too, to ensure that it, it lives. So we want to have, you know, a robust outreach to a, discuss all those things concerning trees.
We did also, just for clarification, one part of DUDAC Scope, which is our outside consultant, is, once this gets adopted, is to do, to come up with some public outreach brochures to really help message out what the new regulations are. We had also talked about, you know, reaching out specifically to HOAs because obviously this could be a partnership. This is an opportunity for a partnership where we could not, the city staff always take the lead, but we could actually partner with HOAs and they can help us get out the word because I know a lot of homeowners just aren't aware of what the rules are. And it may be difficult if, unless they subscribe to the stack, they may not be aware or they may not, you know, necessarily be the homeowner, that would be the, the, the person receiving the mail. So again, trying to be creative with how we do the outreach and maybe working with HOA and neighborhood groups to help promote the new, the new rules, I think would be helpful.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Goodbody?
Thank you. I just have a question regarding, I'm going back to the off-site mitigation. Is there, does the city use a formula or some sort of a scoring system that guides or informs what sites and what part of the city that receive the additional canopy cover? I know that at our last meeting, we spent a considerable amount of time talking about, you know, those blocks and neighborhoods that have low canopy cover. And I'm wondering if you use any kind of scoring system that decides how many trees are, go at La Vista Park or how many go into, you know, the Mission Corridor, for example?
I mean, currently we don't have a scoring system, just because it's, the in lieu fee now is just used, again, it's mostly used for La Vista Park and that's where basically all the funding has been going to, to fund the trees there. The canopy analysis that we did is kind of the first step of understanding where underserved canopy areas are in Hayward. So that would definitely be used as one of the metrics to understand where we should be planting. Like I mentioned before, the tree maintenance department is also then doing a wider scale analysis of the, all the urban forests, which is basically counting and figuring out where all the trees that we have are and, and kind of what state that they are in. So that information, it's just a lot more refined, would then go into then looking at where the specific openings are for street trees or park trees that could be planted within the city. So we definitely feel that the in lieu funds should be used to plant trees in underserved areas, to build the canopy in, in, in those locations. So that's what we definitely be, would be recommending as far as the use of those fees to do, as far as planting new trees goes.
Any other commissioner questions? Go ahead, Commissioner Hammond.
Hello. First, I want to thank the staff and everyone else involved in creating this report. I can see you put a lot of work into it. Obviously, that the post changes the ordinance seem to have taken into consideration all of the comments from past work sessions and, and public comments. My questions, I'll just start from the top, section 101510. Briefly, how do you define private property rights and how is it balanced?
I mean, I'm not sure how to answer the private property rights. I mean, any property that is a, owned by an individual or developer is basically considered a private property, so.
I guess more what I, you, you state that you're addressing balancing private property rights. I'm just curious on how you define that.
Jeremy, do you have something to add to that?
Maybe you can restate that. I'm, I'm a little confused by the question as well. Are, are you talking about the, the ability to expand into the rear yard areas?
Well, Meg, just from the verbiage here, it says that these ordinances tend to protect and preserve trees and control the pruning, removal and relocation of those trees that provide benefits for the neighborhood or the entire community while balancing private property rights and development. So I'm just maybe more specific on the private property rights.
Some of the, yeah, some of the updates are specific. In fact, when we're proposing to expand, to include areas in the rear yard, we are not protecting non-native trees. So there are some trees that would still be eligible to be removed with, with, that would not be subject to this because I think we're talking about adding just the protected trees as, for native. Feel free to correct me if I'm wrong or if I misstated something. So when we're talking about balancing, it's, it's, again, it's really kind of putting our emphasis on the more drought tolerant, low water usage kind of plants that are appropriate and are native to California, to Northern California, that would grow generally with very little maintenance and oftentimes they create habitat. And so however, there's a lot of non-native trees that people plant on their property. There's fruit trees, then these, this would not include protections necessarily for those. So it's kind of a, it's, when we say it's a balanced approach for private property, it's not regulating every little tree, every size on their property. It's really trying to capitalize just on the native trees and making sure that those are preserved and protected.
Okay, thank you. Section 101512, application ordinance, question, is there a list of non-native and invasive trees?
There is a list of invasive trees, yes, that we review when going through the planning process, the site review process. So those trees are not allowed to be planted as part of new development. So there is a, a list that we do review. It's mostly established by the state and we use their basically guidance on what trees are considered invasive. So can this?
I can also jump in there, sorry, real quick. So this is Kevin Cullen and I'm with DUDAC, I'm one of the consultants working on this ordinance. And I would also say, you know, for the, we're working on a guidance document to go along with the ordinance and I think we could, will include a list of both recommended species and tree species to not plant on some of these properties. And like Peter was saying, the California Invasive Plant Council has a list of invasive trees, non-native invasive trees, that obviously the city would want to have people avoid planting. And so I think, you know, we can include those types of resources in this guidance document, which hopefully will also live, you know, on one of the city's webpages and be a resource for residents. And again, we can, you know, when we're doing, when the city's doing outreach to the community, have these resources available for folks. Thank you.
So for clarity, could this list be added to the ordinance?
I think that's something that we can consider, but I think it's part of the working document that DUDAC is working on that will basically be in accompaniment to the ordinance itself. Instead of just having a, a large list within the ordinance itself, it would reference basically this companion piece that would have the list in it that you could, that the community could refer to.
Okay, thank you. Section 101513, non-viability of the city. Can the part about private property be removed from this section since it's already stated in section 101515? The preservation of protected trees.
That's something that we can definitely discuss with the consultant and with staff and I consider doing for sure.
And then section 101514, native trees, question, can this be, this be modified in the future to reflect changing climate conditions?
Definitely it can, yes. I mean, that's always the difficult part of a, of course, creating a list of trees is the fact that there's a, factors that are changing all the time. So usually you have to keep then updating the, the list as well, so, yes.
And then section 101517, requirements for street trees for development projects. Question, I guess, more related to private property. If we're trying to increase the canopy, can we also require that private property needs to put in a tree also?
We do have current a, requirements for planting trees, street trees, of course, planting trees in the front yard. We don't have any requirements for planting trees in the rear yard. But again, that can be considered, but we do feel that the requirements that we have now are definitely promoting the fact or the option of, of planting trees, of course, for new projects.
Okay, thank you. Section 101519, memorial and heritage trees. For heritage trees, who makes the decision and how will they go about getting this information?
Usually when a permit comes in for a removal of a tree or pruning of a tree, then it's up to either myself or the, the landscape architects of the city of Hayward to make the determination if a tree is a heritage tree, based upon the criteria that we've laid out, we talked about earlier.
Okay, so the criteria, it seems like that's a, the, the criteria, there could be some gray area there. So who would actually make the decision on if it's historical or if it's horticulture or if it's historical?
Well, I mean, if it's, historical would have to have some, a historical data behind it that would support the fact that if it was a historical tree. Of course, the other criteria is if it's native or if it provides habitat. Those things can be, of course, defined. Of course, a native tree isn't native to Hayward if it has habitat. That can be reviewed and a, observed. And then, of course, the other two, horticultural or cultural, again, they would have to have some, a reference to those things that would make the tree a, check the box for it being that way, so.
Okay. Section 101520, restricted actions. What exactly is girdling and why would anybody do it?
Well, all the restrictive actions there are basically just to clearly define the, what should be limited to protected trees. So we just basically want to state clearly that you shouldn't be basically doing a, these things to, to the trees, so. I can't say I know the exact definition of girdling. I think it is the, a, the wrapping around. I don't know, maybe Kevin, you can assist with the definition of that, but a.
Yeah, it's, it's essentially removing a, a section of the, you know, outer cambrium, the bark of the tree all the way around, so that you're basically cutting off the flow of, of nutrients of the tree and it can often damage or kill, kill the tree. Maybe why it would happen is, I guess if there was, I don't know, a big like rope or something that had excess pressure or, I, I don't know, people are just chipping away at it or something and not, not realizing what they're doing. But yeah, obviously to be, to be avoided.
Okay. So I see the purpose for including, attaching ropes, wires and signs to any protected tree. But what about temporary, is there anything in there about temporary ropes for clotheslines, swings, and what about tree houses?
It would restrict all those actions, even if they were temporary, from a protected tree. All those things most likely will damage the tree and we want to avoid that from happening.
So even if it's short term, I can understand over long term, the tree would start to wrap around those?
For the purpose of that section, yes, it would be for short term as well.
101521, question on part 6A, is 125% enough to cover all the costs for growing, keeping, transporting, planting and maintaining the replacement tree?
Per our observation and understanding, the process that goes into it, yes. We feel that that 25% covers all the costs associated with the planting and the maintenance of those trees.
Okay. 101526, exceptions on part four. Where exactly is the airport included in all this? Does the airport stand alone in a separate ordinance or could the airport be included in this ordinance?
The airport is included in the ordinance. It's part of that accompanying document that goes along with the ordinance. Basically, what has been produced is a, a map of around the airport that has different restrictions for different heights. So of course, the closer you get to the airport, the, the reduced height of things that can be around, mostly for trees and buildings, of course. But in the site review process, again, when we're reviewing plans, we review that map to understand if the project is in one of those areas and then make the comment or determination on if the trees that are proposed don't apply to basically the, the height limit of those spaces.
And then another question, every year, the Hayward Fire Department sends to myself and my neighbors a notice to clear away the dead debris. How does this, how does getting a permit in this kind of coincide? For instance, it requires that all the trees be, branches be removed 10 feet off the ground. I'm kind of guessing 10 feet up off the ground, you're more than likely going to find a branch that's more than two inches in diameter.
Right. Well, what we're proposing for that is that a, for instances, instances like that, that the, there would be an exemption to it as far as you getting the notice from the fire department that basically is directing you to do that, that you would be exempt then from having to pull a permit for removing the branches or the debris that was under the tree.
Okay, thank you. I think that's it for my questions.
Great, thank you.
Are there any other questions by any commissioners? Okay, I'll close commissioner questions and open up for public comment. We have a comment by Mr. Bruce King. Welcome back.
Hi, Bruce King, again with Friends of San Lorenzo Creek. I've been reviewing projects along creeks and, and riparian areas, in both the unincorporated areas and the city of Hayward for, for many years, so I've got a lot of comparisons. I think this is excellent that you're adding, adding requirements in here, especially for, for native trees and especially on private property. The unincorporated areas don't have such a requirement and it's resulted in disastrous consequences sometimes. For example, just across the creek, the San Lorenzo Creek on, near A Street, the Eden Housing Project there just is, just completed a development and about 80 trees, 20% of them being native trees, many of them huge, huge oaks, all got cut down. There was no mitigation required. But what the unincorporated area has, that the city of Hayward doesn't, is a setback requirement along the top of Banks for Creeks, a 20-foot setback requirement. So, but then city of Hayward's water course ordinance doesn't have that requirement, so it doesn't protect, automatically protect trees within that setback. You do have an ordinance, it doesn't have the setback requirement, but the city of Hayward has typically said, we use the county ordinance as guidance. Okay? Guidance can, can sometimes not always work. So that's one comment. But just across this stream, on the Rockaway side of the property, right off of A Street, we just had a, a large apartment building complex that got approved. It's not built, the developer's trying to sell the rights to it. And there, the 20-foot setback, which was established by Caltrans as a conservation easement, protected the, the trees. But all the trees outside the setback that were really part of the, the riparian area, the developer cut down without a permit and then ended up gotten, got cited for that and had to basically have a mitigation. But all those trees are now ending up somewhere else in a park or something like in South Hayward. So that's a weakness of this ordinance, that the mitigated trees might end up in someplace where they're not really habitat. The fourth and B project development that got approved on San Lorenzo Creek, some of the weaknesses there, the, the setback requirement got applied, or the, the guidance, but the backyards of the houses didn't get any trees added because all the trees that were, you know, required, which ended up on the street and, but we've got a whole riparian area that's treeless with no added trees. So those are some of the weaknesses and things, but I think this is. So those are some of the weaknesses and things, but I think this is a good move forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other public comments? I will close public comments at this time on this item, and I will open the floor for Commissioner comments, and I would like to comment first, since I didn't have a chance before. I want to make sure I get a chance to say a couple of things. I really appreciate the fact that you added the sliding scale, because I was very concerned that, you know, Hayward residents would have an undue financial burden with some of the fees and penalties and those sorts of things. So I'm, I'm happy to see the sliding scale. I'm also really happy to see that Hayward is actively trying to simplify the code, because I think making a code clearer makes educating the public easier, which makes, makes the public more likely to actually obey the code and less enforcement. And less enforcement means more time for staff to do other things. I also am glad that the staff is actively thinking about how to make their loads lighter. It sounds like reducing the permits to three months as opposed to a year will make their load lighter. It sounds like some of the other proposed amendments will make their loads lighter, and I think that's definitely a good thing for our city as well. I really enjoyed hearing the presentation tonight. I thought it was extremely informative. I appreciated being, when Jeremy said that you're thinking outside of the box, talking about partnering, partnering with HOAs, I think that's really brilliant. And I, I'm a member of an HOA, so I look forward to seeing what you guys put together in my neighborhood through my HOA. I think I agree with you that the, the code, the ordinance should not list a bunch of trees. I think it's better to have that accompanying document, because as we see here, amending an ordinance is quite an effort. So any way that we can make the code simple, but then make the, you know, just attach something to make, as a reference, for example, I think is a good way to go, to give our citizens, our residents enough clarification and the staff enough specificity so that they can implement the code, but also not have to amend the code every, every six months or every year, whatever it would be. And overall, I, oh, and I'm very glad that the, I like the idea of having the, you have to have at least two of the criteria for the heritage trees. I thought that was pretty clear and, and seems reasonable to me. Basically, my, my biggest concern, which is making sure that the residents don't have an undue financial burden, is something that it sounds like you are thinking about, your cognizance of this, of this issue, and I really appreciate that, because I want to make sure that, and I, I read it, I, I know that you're, you're saying that very few of the permits really come from the residents. It sounds like it's more from developers, but I just want to make sure that when a resident does need the services of tree pruning or maintenance or any of those things, that it's affordable. So thank you for your time. Any other comments by commissioners? Commissioner Hardy?
Thank you. So I just, I've neglected to thank staff earlier for the presentation, so I do appreciate you for that. And just for, similar to what Commissioner Hammond said, it's, it's great to see all of the, the changes and the thoughtfulness from all the things that we said previously, so I really appreciate that. I'm just really trying to think right now, some of you may not, I really, I used to do community outreach as a career, and so I really do just hope that we can make this like a celebration and not like a, here's what you need to know about this new ordinance, but it's like, the whole like Hayward being a tree city, and people know when they're moving here, like that we care about trees, and here's all the reasons why doing this is great for you, for the community, for, you know, so the more that we can promote that, I think it will be really, really good. And I hope that that's what's being worked on now, it probably is, but just, yeah, and just incentivizing, like for them to get like what they get out of it, like why it's, it's not just a burden. Yes, it's another thing to think about or learn or do, but here's all the benefits of doing it, so those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Franco Clausen?
I want to echo that I didn't also thank you for all the hard work that goes into it. Just some comments, I want to echo everything that all the other commissioners said. I think it was really important for you to bring up what our rights are, but also recognizing what you mentioned about fairness and making it affordable. You know, I know we don't talk to, you know, when people are making public comment, but something to be said, I used to be an elected official in Santa Clara County on the Open Space Authority, and in that role, we always made sure that we're protecting water, wildlife, the aquifers, and that we were raising the money to be able to buy people's property, to put these easements on it, but letting them live there, because we didn't want an economic disruption to the services they provided or anything. I take that same emotion into what I mentioned earlier, is making sure that people don't feel it. To the point, I am also, my full-time job is outreach, as I work for, as of today, the California Teachers Association, is that there has to be a more fun way. I am a tree hugger, yeah, I claim that. And with that, it would be so great if I had something in my hand, you know, a QR code. I know my neighbors. I, they, we all, we're a walking neighborhood on Sleepy Hollow, regardless of what our neighborhood looks like, we know each other. It would be so easy as a commissioner to go knock on people I talk to almost once a week, to say, hey, did you know about this? Did you know that you, because our neighborhood is full of trees. I don't, Sleepy Hollow and that whole Eden, we are full of trees. You know, in your neighborhood, we live across Hesperian, and so it would be a celebration when we do just take this next step forward. I'm down, it seems like you're down, the rest of them will be down, is to take part in announcing this as a fun, engaging thing. Because again, look in the audience, it's the people who care so much about this that are here, but there's a lot of people that care that don't know. They just don't know. So everything that you said was wonderful. I'm down to get into the community and share this work. And again, thank you for all this, but just consider some of the things we said tonight in the next phase, because we do want to pass this, we want to make sure we have beautiful canopies in Hayward, but we also want to make sure that we recognize the moment in what people are going through.
Thank you. Commissioner Hammond, did you have?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, Commissioner Goodbody.
Thank you. Well, clearly, are geared toward a major tree campaign here, so I, I, you know, want to just thank the staff again, and it's just an amazing, you know, work and want to make sure that we actually, you know, have, you have enough feedback from us from, you know, to actually implement it. So some of my ideas on implementation that came up while my fellow commissioners were speaking, was that if, in order to help some of the homeowners with maintenance of trees that might be in like a PG&E wires or fire hazards, could we possibly maybe look at duplicating that very popular free disposal days to a free tree pruning day? Like maybe half of the month you have disposal days and half of the, of the year you have tree pruning? That's just an idea that I came up with as, as Commissioner Franco Clausen was talking about that. And then in terms of like the partnerships that you are looking at for outreach and education efforts, I would, I would love to see the Keep Hayward Clean and Green Task Force engaged in, in, in those efforts, given that they are all around the city. There's, you know, 16 or 17 or 18 of them on the commission, and, you know, they, you know, they're at people's homes, and they are in the neighborhoods. And so I think that any implementation efforts would align with their, with their charge, with the charge of their commission. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Commissioner Hammond?
Thank you. I'll just kind of start from the top again. 101510, I'm in general agreement. 101511, I'm in general agreement. However, in addition to poldering, I would like to add the definitions for topping, line tailing, and any other violations. 101512, I'm in general agreement. 101513, I'm in general agreement. Protected trees. 101514, I'm in agreement. Non-native and invasive species, in general agreement, although I'd like to see a list of non-native and invasive trees added to the ordinance for clarity. Street trees, in general agreement. Memorial and heritage trees, in general agreement. The, 101515, preservation of protected trees. I believe that the violation of the code raises a lot of questions about property rights and the ability to maintain their trees and the ability to pay their penalties. I believe that this would probably need further discussion. On the nesting birds, I was happy to see the addition of wildlife and nesting birds in, in this ordinance. I didn't ask it before, but are the NR policies also going to be listed in this new ordinance? And in general, I'm in full agreement of adding this to the ordinance. 101517, for the development projects, I'm in general agreement with this section. 101518, tree protections, I'm in general agreement with all the parts 1 through 5. 101519, I agree with the section in its entirety, and I strongly agree that development projects will require approval of the highest approving body. 101520, restricted actions. I agree with restricting anything that will endanger the long-term health of a tree. 101521, permits and replacement requirements, I'm in general agreements. And there's subparts, however, part 6C for residential properties, perhaps I'd like to see not only a two-for-one tree, trees for removal, but perhaps two-for-four trees for two trees, and I agree with keeping with the current mitigation for three or more trees. I'm in agreement with 101522, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, and 29. I'm in general agreement with the penalties portion proposed by the city. I have some questions or comments about whether or not the policies have enough bite in it to keep people from, from going ahead and cutting their trees down or topping them irresponsibly. And I hope that the city has enough staff to be able to police and, and give out the fines. I'm in support for 101530, 31. On 32, I guess I had maybe a question on this. I'm in general agreement, but should not the illegal removal of a $40,000 tree be worth more than a misdemeanor? And 101533, I support it in all its parts. So first and foremost, I'm in favor of protecting our Hayward trees, except for invasive species, and I would like very much to see our canopy grow more than the proposed 10% goal for our city. If we were to grow our canopy, we'll need to expand where we plant trees and to protect our trees, even if they are located in our backyards. The needs of the many outweigh the needs of the individual. We all need to do our part. I believe that these updates to the tree ordinance aim to preserve our present canopy and to make the process of keeping, maintaining, and removal of our trees clear and equitable. However, we still need to consider that expanding our canopy does raise the risk of wildfire overloading our present storm drain infrastructure, future solar panel needs, and how it affects our insurance policies. Also, we also need to consider the cost of a view. I think that the in-lu fees need to be examined further in calculating real costs to both the city and to private property owners, and how best to use the funds created by the fees. And how are we going to help those property owners that are not able to maintain their trees or to afford the penalties? That's it. Thank you.
Commissioner Goodbody?
Thank you. I have one last suggestion in terms of the, the question that I asked earlier about the scoring system or a formula used to prioritize what sites or what parts of the cities get canopy cover. My thought was that maybe, again, you could utilize the Green and Clean and Green Task Force to maybe help develop or provide feedback on that kind of scoring system, given that, you know, they, much of their work is in all parts of the city, and so they would know which areas, you know, neither canopy cover and which other ones don't. Thank you.
Commissioner Hammond?
To comment on that, I think the, the task force would be happy to be asked to, to contribute.
Any other Commissioner comments? All right, I'll close Commissioner comments on item number three and open to item number four. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes of March 28, 2024, September 26, 2024, and December 12, 2024?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Well, second.
Seconded by Carla Goodbody. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Franco Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodbody?
Yes.
Commissioner Hammond?
Stain on the 20, on the March 24, 2024, yes on all the rest.
March 28, 2024?
Yeah, the, I did miss that meeting, so.
Okay. You actually can still vote, even if you missed the meeting, but that's up to you.
Then yes on everything.
Commissioner Hardy?
Yes.
And Chair Lo?
Yes. Thank you very much. The minutes are all approved. And Commissioner reports. Mr. Loach?
Good evening, Commissioners. It was, I hope everyone had a wonderful and safe New Year. Great to see everyone again. Just a couple of quick announcements. So I just wanted to announce that we have three of our planning commissioners attending the League of California Cities Planning Commissioner Academy, which actually starts this weekend. So I hope it's really exciting. I hope you learn a lot, and I'm looking for, was it next weekend? Next weekend, okay. Don't show up there today, or tomorrow, this weekend. But it would be, I hope you all enjoy it, and I'm anxious to hear any feedback that you have on the program itself. Also, you probably received an email a couple of weeks ago about the biannual progress report that we put out. Certainly, if you have any questions on any of the projects, feel free to contact me directly or the project sponsor that name listed in the, in the report. We do have a meeting tentatively now scheduled for March 13. However, there is no items currently on the agenda, and likely that meeting will get canceled. So if you're trying to plan your schedule, unless you, you'll know definitively next week when we confirm any potential agenda. However, we do have a meeting on the 27th. We'll be bringing back at least one item for consideration for the commissioned, to consider. And that's it for my announcements this week. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other Commissioner announcements? Go ahead, Commissioner Franco Clausen.
I just wanted to announce, this is kind of personal, but I actually left my job at Equality California and started as a political organizer for the California Teachers Association. With that, thank you. The 13th was, I was going to say I wasn't going to be able to make it, so now I'll be able to make it, so thank you. Thank you.
And any other Commissioner announcements? Anyone? All right. At this time, the next meeting, I should say, as we were told, is March 27, because March 13 will probably be canceled. And so at this time, at 8:52 PM, the meeting is adjourned. March 13 will probably be canceled, and so at this time, at 8:52 PM, the meeting is adjourned.